Okay, it's 5 o'clock. Welcome, everybody. Thank you very much for coming. It's a beautiful night, so we really appreciate you being here. I'm going to go ahead and call the meeting to order. Can we all stand for Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mrs. Stettwiler.
Present.
Mr. Hooly.
Here.
Mr. McCartney is not here. Mr. Votah?
Here.
Mrs. Walker?
Here.
Let's all take a moment for silent prayer and meditation. Thank you.
You know, I wonder if the treasure responsibility that Bill had last time was just a little too much.
It overtaxed him, probably.
He's still recovering.
Yes. We did miss you. It's good to have you back.
Thank you.
Yes.
All right, moving on. Superintendent's report.
We had to do the agenda.
No, I skipped a whole page. Can you tell I'm excited about the weather? Okay, I'm sorry. We have a motion to approve the September 9th agenda.
So moved. Second.
And we're good. Okay. Mrs. Walker?
Yes.
Mr. Votah?
Yes.
Mr. Hooly?
Yes.
Mrs. Stettwiler?
Yes.
Motion passes.
May I have a motion to approve the minutes from the August 12, 2025 regular meeting?
So moved.
Second. Roll call.
Mrs. Stettwiler?
Yes.
Mr. Votah?
Yes.
Mr. Hooly?
Yes.
Mrs. Walker?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Great. Now superintendent's report.
Thank you, Mrs. Walker. Well, we had an outstanding start to the '25-'26 school year. At all five buildings, my team, the entire district central office was rotating through the different buildings for the first several days, rotating so everyone could be in all the buildings. And really, we were just there to listen, provide support, greet our students, greet our staff. And I just can't tell you enough how really overwhelmed we were with hearing back from our building leaders, our secretaries, custodians, and teachers and our students about how great the start of the school year was for them. So I think there are many factors that play into this. Last year, there were, I just want to remind the board, a lot of moving parts. Mrs. Quick had some really high priority teaching and learning initiatives that were going on that had to be prioritized and go on throughout the school year. I was making some significant changes with the operations. We had some big shifts in technology in our college and career readiness work. You know, Emily Byers and Dr. Schrock, they didn't start their new contracts of work on August 1st when their contract started. When the board authorized me to hire them in their new roles, they started collaborating right away and really building the foundation for the work of how they wanted to look August 1st and August 18th when teachers returned and August 21st. So I want to commend them. But now, our technology is at a higher standard and our college and career readiness work. We already have multiple students placed with different partnerships. I want to have Nicole report that to you. Not today, but we're just getting a few more things settled, but she'll report that to you early this school year. But we're really excited with that work. I haven't done this in my three years of being a superintendent. This is my fourth start, but this is the first time I said I can finally feel confident that we are operating at super high standards in the district. And I'm really proud. So thank you to the board for your support. And I wanted to just thank our, you know, district leaders, our supervisors, all of our principals, and all of our teachers. And because we're operating at this high standard now, our students and our families are benefiting from it. So I'm really excited. Even our athletic programs, I know that a lot of you have been to the games, but all of our students and coaches are performing at high levels. Boys golf, they're at an eight-and-zero record. Girls golf, 11-3. Boys soccer, two-and-oh in the conference and five-and-one overall. Girls soccer, two-and-oh and one in the CBC. Volleyball, eight-and-one. And football, three-and-zero. So we're just off to a great start. The, I guess, the morale and climate and culture in the buildings is just high energy. So I'm really excited about that. I wanted to encourage the board this evening, if we happen to get out of this meeting a little bit early, there's a home volleyball game going on against Urbana. If you haven't been down to see the entrance and the hallways, at least pop in, take a look at the nice work that Mr. Rule and Mr. Lester put together. We have the glowing Alter A on the wall behind a real wooden floor on the wall. I never did send you a picture of that. You got to see that in person. Now we have the signage up on the paint. We're only waiting for the glass over the trophy cases. So if you have a few minutes on your way out, I encourage you to pop down to the athletic area. Last board meeting, I communicated that these postcards were supposed to hit every mailbox. I am a little bit disappointed because I was telling Mr. Jester and a couple of my team members, this is the first time that these hit mailboxes and then we're having a board meeting. And we are announcing that we're having this board meeting and providing a designated 30-minute time to talk about any questions or concerns we have for the bond. And there only might be one person here that's to do that. So we have two, one more meeting and then the community forum. So I'm excited about that. Mr. Jester and I will continue to get information out. I'm also pleased to announce, I feel like we're on track with all the district communications. Back in June, in July, when we, you know, were, I guess, processing about what took place at that May election, I announced to the board that we're going to stay on this timeline with district communications, get through the start of the school year, then hand off the communications and the work to our levy committee for them to land that plane. But I really feel like we're right on track. Even today, after school hours, the PAC chairs were meeting in the building at Canaan after their regular work hours, just engaging with teachers about how to get involved, if they want to get involved. They'll be at the junior high tomorrow and then making their way around to the other building. So one area that we missed the mark in May was teacher involvement. We've already, we're already hitting that mark right now. And I just want to commend that levy volunteers for the work that they're doing. Mrs. Walker and Mr. Hooly's video messages are now playing at the home football games. If you haven't seen those, make sure you get to the football game about 40 minutes before kickoff so you can see their message. So anyone else that wants to do that video message, just let me know. What we're doing is going through Mrs. Curzy, and she just does a phenomenal job putting that together for us. I know that, I believe, each of you have sent a bond issue statement regarding your support for the plan. And I'm forwarding that off to the PAC, and they're using that to communicate to the community about your messaging. So thank you for those comments and statements. And then I also wanted to thank Mrs. Nicole DeRenz, JAEA president. She's been instrumental in being the point person between the levy committee and the teachers and making sure that we are protecting our employees by not doing any campaigning during the regular workday, but, you know, using personal emails, doing things after hours. And Nicole's been great guiding those teachers and staff members. So I wanted to thank you. Couple more pieces. I guess I'm really excited, and you have this in front of you. I used Bill McCartney as an example last board meeting because he has multiple students in multiple buildings. But this was, and you should have, you should have received this. This is, every family's going to receive one email on every other Friday with access to every building newsletter. So whether you have a student at Canaan or not, you can click on whatever newsletter you want for a biweekly update. And then the opposite Friday, board members are going to receive updates from my office and our directors on progress initiatives and just keeping you informed. We're really excited how that went out. This past couple of weeks, I feel like we improved the communication, streamlined it, and not bombarded our families with all the emails. So it was August 18th. It was a convocation. Most of you were with us. I was able to announce our one-word focus, and that's connect. Mrs. Stettwiler did an outstanding job really closing out and tying all the loose ends together with what connect means to us. I did not do a staff survey this year, and I explained to the teachers that, you know, if I put five power words out there that could possibly be our focus and, you know, 35% or 45% select one word like family, and then 25% select elevate, you still have multiple people not able to, I guess, connect with the word that they wanted. So this year, I chose connect after a summer-long conversations with my administrative team. It just really spoke to me because I feel like we did all the, you know, there was all the moving parts last year, all the shifts, all the elevating. And now this year, the expectation is no new initiatives. Let's just connect all the dots. Let's connect the learning. Let's connect how we streamline so that Monroe and Plain City and Canaan are not doing things independently or site-based. Everything is aligned K-12. So that was the reasoning for this focus word, connect. But it's also about connecting with our students more than we ever have, connecting with our families, and going into this bond, most importantly, is connecting with our community. So I'm really excited about this work. I'm excited about the communications that are going out. Tyler's done a great job of getting that one word out about connect and connecting with the community. And I know the board has just really stepped up here, being visible, being vocal, and supportive of the master facility plan and the bond. So I wanted to thank you. And that's all for my report.
Well, that's awesome. That's a lot of good stuff. And I, on behalf of the board, I just, I want to thank you. I know that every time I give you a compliment, you pass it on to other people. But culture starts at the top, and your energy is infectious. And that's obvious by how everything is going in the district, from the grounds to the bus drivers to, I mean, the students. I mean, the student section at the football game Friday night was amazing. I mean, it was amazing. And I sat there and I watched our principal and vice principal keep an eye on them the entire game, so nobody stepped out of line. I mean, everything ran so smoothly. And I just want to thank you. And of course, we always appreciate every single person who's working in this district.
Thank you, Mrs. Walker.
Anybody else?
I agree.
Ditto.
That's on record, right?
Recorded there, recorded there.
Okay, moving on. Public comments? Okay. Now, time for the treasurer's report. Can I have a motion to approve the August 2025 financial reports as presented?
So moved.
Second.
Okay. So the quick updates here. So we're two months into the fiscal year, so we're just getting started. Union County, our real estate settlement, we didn't actually receive the cash until September 2nd. So it's not included in the August financials, which is why there is such a pretty big discrepancy between this year and last year. It's in our bank account now, but I couldn't record it in August because we didn't get it until September. Signs of reading, we got our final stipend reimbursement, or reimbursement for the stipends we paid our staff that came last month. So our restricted funds are a little bit higher than usual. But overall, we're on track for revenues. Our expenditures are, everything is kind of flipping over to the new contract year. So in July, some of our classified staff received new contracts, the ministry received new contracts in August. And this coming Monday, our teachers are getting their first pays on their new contracts, plus the bus drivers, aides, cafeteria workers. So our largest groups are getting paid for the first time for this current contract year. So we're also having some additional capital outlay, so that's furniture to furnish our new classrooms as we're adding new teachers. We have to give them furniture to operate with. And also, a lot of licensing subscriptions that falls on our supplies. So as everything is more digital, that's what we have to be spending our money on. I do want to point out, this is toward the end of your PAC that our general fund cash flow. Our 2026 line is lower than it has been in the last couple of years, and that's just because of the fiscal year transfers that I did to all comply with what could have been in the new state budget, which turned out, I got vetoed. But, so we ended up moving funds off the general fund to our reserve accounts, which are being used to fund building repairs that we have at this building, the parking lot, ceiling, land purchase, which you can see up there. So it's money that's set aside for projects that we know is coming, coming down the road, but we have the money set aside now so we don't have to scramble and find sources of the cash. So I just want to point that out, that it looks a little lower than it has been in the last couple of years, but that's just because of what's going on in the state level. So that's what's going on right now. So you can save budget. I have, I am working on the, what's now called the budget plus three years forecasted, or I'd like to call it the forecast, because it's four years now. So that is due October 15th at the latest. I'm working to get it done and off to the board by the end of this month for review and comment so we can hopefully get it passed and submit it in time. Things are looking on track. Nothing, no real major changes from May that I'm seeing. So should be nothing too controversial there. But once we get it finalized, I got a meeting with Dr. Miller, Mrs. Quick, to kind of, to go over and tighten things up, and we'll share it out with the board. So that's what's going on.
Great, thank you. Any questions? Okay, appreciate that. Roll call.
Mr. Hooly?
Yes.
Mrs. Stettwiler?
Yes.
Mr. Votah?
Yes.
Mrs. Walker?
Yes.
The motion passes.
May I have a motion to accept the following grants and donations listed in Section 6.02?
So moved.
Second.
All right. I'd like to thank Cypress Church for their breakfast donation for the convocation. And from the Pleasant Valley senior citizens. And to anonymous donors, thank you very much for donating money to cover unpaid lunch balances. Thank you to Smiles to Love for donating money to assist with the Canaan Middle School sixth-grade shirts. And also thank you to Memorial Hospital for donating $13,750 as part of an agreement to assist with the athletic department and supplies to the students, athletes. Now, I was looking at the federal grants, and I noticed that under Title I, first of all, these were frozen. So it's good they've been unfrozen.
Yeah, Titles II, III, and IV were all frozen. They were being reviewed by the Trump administration for, you know, alignment with their priorities. And then the end of July, they announced that they're done reviewing them, they're good to go, got them released.
Okay, great news. And so the, there's, some went up, a couple went up, a couple went down.
Yeah.
But the major difference was Title I. I was talking to Dr. Miller about this before the meeting. And that is largely based on the percentage of students in our district that fall in the lower income range, and then is reimbursement for lunch?
So Title I, that supports our efforts at Monroe Elementary. That's our only Title I building for lower-income students.
Okay.
And that helps provide additional supports. We're paying some teachers out of that to provide the small, small support. Mrs. Carl and Mrs. Quick can give more details of those programming. It's not just our demographic numbers, though. It's statewide, because these are passed through by the federal government. So, you know, as Ohio's student-age population continues to decline, we're going to expect to see fewer federal dollars because of that. So Ohio as a whole gives a large grant, a large block of money, based on their formula, looking at all the states. So Congress appropriates millions of dollars, look at all the states and their data and their student populations and demographics. They then distribute it to the states, and the states have to distribute it to the local education agencies, which is we are. So it's not just us.
So as they're distributing more money amongst more schools with lower-income students?
Yeah, so Florida might have gotten more, Texas might have gotten more. But then Ohio's getting less because our student population is going down overall as a state. So we're not the only district that's going to see a decline just because the state of Ohio as a whole got fewer funds.
Okay, I appreciate it.
Mark, let me ask you, if our student population goes up?
Yeah, yeah, because it's a per-student calculation, yeah.
It's by pupil, right? The formula is based on the number of pupils, right?
Yeah.
Okay.
But it also could be, because if you look at, like, the districts where declining enrollment, their proportion of student, economic disadvantaged students tend to be higher.
That's true.
So you're talking about Northeast Ohio, Southeast Ohio, you know, they'll probably get more federal support because that's what it's targeted for.
Oh, got you, got you, got you.
Yeah.
Can I just bring up one other thing? Since we're on this topic, I really think it's probably important that we touch on this every board meeting. Mark, is there any way, or maybe Carla, help me explain to the board this overflow plan that I've been working on? As more students move into the Plain City area, it's just not as easy to fill up every seat at Monroe because of the, how the, these grants support Monroe. So we've talked about the CBA cap with 25 students and 28 students. Could you speak to that?
Yeah, so Title I has, as part of me and Title I building, we have to have reduced class sizes. So if we were to go over that cap, then it jeopardizes our Title I funding because we're not having that 16-to-1, I believe is the number. Is that right?
17-to-1.
17-to-1. So if we start overflowing, and then we're at 18-to-1, 19-to-1, then it starts violating the plan that we put together for Title I.
How close are we to that right now? It's in the report that I sent you last month, but I can resend it to you. It basically had a breakdown of how many seats we had available at Plain City Elementary and Monroe.
Okay.
So most of these grants are going to personnel, and that's to provide additional supports and supplement, not the plan. So that's where the funds are going. They're going to fluctuate a little bit as other school districts implement their budgets and their plans. There might be some reallocation if Congress allocates, appropriates more funds to, that's almost a possibility, that we can get additional funds throughout the year.
Okay. Any other questions? Great. Roll call.
Mrs. Stettwiler?
Yes.
Mrs. Walker?
Yes.
Mr. Votah?
Yes.
Mr. Hooly?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Okay. The board needs to approve the amending appropriations.
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay. So may I have a motion to amend the appropriations for the federal grants, carryover encumbrances, and biannual updates to the financial forecast?
So moved.
Second.
And, so yeah, so updates are for those, in July, I did not appropriate the federal grants because I was told that they weren't coming. Now they're here. So changing the appropriations because of that. We're also just have what's known as carryover encumbrances. So that is obligations we made last fiscal year that's being paid this year. Make sure those are covered. And we have, there's some small changes to our forecasts that I'm updating our general fund appropriations to match. So that's what's going on there. Can I answer any questions?
I don't have any others.
I don't have any.
Anyone else?
Yeah.
Great.
All right. Mr. Hooly?
Yes.
Mrs. Stettwiler?
Yes.
Mr. McCartney is not here. Mr. Votah?
Yes.
Mrs. Walker?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Okay, under Section 7.04, may I have a motion to approve the employment and personnel consent items as presented in 7.01 through 7.03?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, so the bus driver incentives, do you want to talk about that for a minute? Thank you.
First of all, I want to thank all of the board members for taking, you know, having a conversation with me last week about this before this went on the agenda. But we are having an extremely hard time having any backups or subs or full-time drivers in the transportation department. Misty, our supervisor, who is, I mean, she is scheduled to be in the office to take phone calls, answer emails from parents. She's driving every single day since the first day of school. If we have one driver right now that can't make it tomorrow because of an emergency or they're ill, we are doubling up on routes. And this is going to be a headache for families and the district. And so we're trying to do everything we can to incentivize anyone to come on board and at least apply and test drive a bus. What we would have to do, because our buses are full, we wouldn't be able to just absorb, like, this driver take 15, and this driver take 15, and get everyone to school on time because there's not 15 open seats. We would need to take a route and get them to school or get them to home, and then go back and get the next route if a driver is out right now. So what we've been doing is sending email blasts out. Tyler has been doing social media posts, really, all summer long through the fall. I contacted every superintendent that I know, and I asked them, if you have at least one extra sub that you don't need driving right now, let us pay you to pay them to drive for us on a daily basis. And no superintendent had one available, or maybe they didn't want to give them up. But we didn't get one name from that. We had, if you were at the football game, Mr. Lester did a great job with this, but we had a table set up with our drivers, a nice banner, and you saw probably a dozen announcements that were, you know, announced and went across the scoreboard. If you have any interest or have questions, go see the drivers at the table. We had one person show up that evening. We are getting creative, and we're going to set a bus down at 340 West Main, and we're going to put a banner there, how to apply. And so that's why we're almost, you know, taking desperate measures now because we have to make sure that we get our students here, and they're here for the entire day. We're not doubling up. But this would be, if someone applies, they have paid training, and if they drive for at least 90 days, then it would be a $500, a one-time $500 incentive. And any JA employee, if they refer a driver that drives for a year, that would be a $500 incentive as well, too. So, Mr. Lester, did I forget anything that we're trying to do here? But we've exhausted everything that we know. And so if you know anyone, or if you guys want to get your CDLs and volunteer and drive, we'll take you up on that offer.
How long from point of interest to licensing them to pick up kids does it take?
Has Misty told you that? It is extensive?
It's a pretty big process.
Yeah.
And if they pass it?
Months?
Or if they have to take it numerous times?
Right.
Yeah.
A month or three months or?
I mean, it depends on how many hours they commit to driving. If they drive, you know, four hours a day with our driver supervising them, then they can get it done a lot faster. But it comes down to the schedule, too, and if they're working another job or...
Depends on if they have a CDL already, what type of license they have, what things they're approved to drive with.
Well, just assume no CDL and they have no job currently.
It's months.
Yeah.
Okay.
Months.
Thank you.
And, and we had a retired Cota bus driver who has a CDL, apply. We're going to try to get him on within the next week, and he's got to go through the whole training because it's a school bus. So nothing is simple about this process.
Yeah.
But we haven't been starting this now and scrambling. This has been going on for six months.
Yep.
Okay, well, good luck.
Have you reached out to Cota to see if they have, like, a retired group that meets on a regular basis or anything like, I mean?
No, but we're reaching out to, there are some companies that offer drivers. I can't remember the name of it. Mr. Lester, did you reach out to anyone? Or did we, was this where we learned that they would have to go through the same application process and their background process for hiring is a different standard than what we would have, you know, being alone on a bus with children?
Yeah. Yeah, right, background checks and all that, yep.
Okay, is there any questions about the employment items or the resignations? No? Okay, roll call.
Mr. Votah?
Yes.
Mrs. Walker?
Yes.
Stettwiler?
Yes.
Mr. Hooly?
Yes.
Motion passes.
May I have a motion to declare transportation impractical and offer payment in lieu of transportation for the '25-'26 school year for the students listed below?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Okay. Roll call.
Mr. Votah?
Yes.
Mrs. Walker?
Yes.
Mr. Hooly?
Yes.
Mrs. Stettwiler?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Stettweiler.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Moving on to Section 8.02, the adult meal prices. May I have a motion to approve the changes recommending a 25 cents increase for breakfast and a 10% increase for lunch?
10 cents.
10 cents.
10 cents. Did I say percent?
Yeah.
25 cent, 10 cent, breakfast and lunch. Can I get a motion?
Yes, I'll move.
Second.
Okay. I don't.
I mean, it's based off a USDA formula that we have to update each year, so. We'll have a message out to the staff tomorrow, you know, letting them know of the price increases and the requirement to have money in their accounts.
Okay.
Can I have it immediately?
Yeah.
Roll call.
Mrs. Stettweiler.
Yes.
Mrs. Walker.
Yes.
Mr. Votak.
Yes.
Mr. Hooly.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Okay, we are now at, in Section 9 of our board meeting, which is to have a public discussion if anyone has questions about the bond issue, the upcoming bond issue. I will say that the Title I funding and the impact on the student-to-teacher ratio in Monroe was a consideration that I didn't realize. I think a lot of the, it seems very logical to just move kids from Plain City to Monroe, and that's way, that's more difficult than it appears, as are a lot of things. Seems like an easy fix, but it can't be done for other reasons. And in this case, it's because we have restrictions on how many kids are in the classrooms at Monroe. So, that's interesting. Anyone have anything else they want to talk about?
Yeah, I mean, I know that the levy committee is working. We have some, I mean, some things are a little bit different this year that are exciting that hopefully will result in some more yes votes, but, you know, I think it's just getting, that's just getting started, so hopefully, you know, we can get, you know, another 100 or so yes votes or whatever we need to pass out at this time. But I know the levy committee's working really pretty hard and has some equal ideas. And we were at the meeting Sunday night just about mapping, and so when we get ready to knock on doors and stuff like that, we're going to have some good maps that we can use to identify folks, so it's good.
Okay, great. Any, nobody, no, all the people who are here, nobody has a question.
Carla, can you ask us a question?
She's like left cards on everybody's shirt, please ask this.
I can share with the board at second grade Plain City Elementary, we are at 100% max. And so, we're going to try this year to not overflow anyone to Monroe. The board approved that letter of understanding last month that authorizes me to provide, or Mark to, Mr. Ingles, to provide the stipend to a teacher if they take over 25 students. And so, we're right at that cutoff right now, so.
Just in second grade?
Just in second grade, but we have a couple of other grades that are creeping up, too.
Sure. Okay.
In our total new enrollment this year ended up around 100, is that correct?
So, it was about 100 more students this year in August than last year in August, but the document that you have in front of you, the highlight, you'll see that we're pretty close on pace with the alignment of future things. So, we're 12 over students this year compared to the projections.
So, they projected?
That's.
88 for this one year or an average, and we actually ended up having 100, for example.
Yeah, and that's preschool through.
Preschool, including preschool. So, we're close, we're close on projections. It's not like we're blowing projections out of the water.
No, we use the projections to help us budget for the current year, so the fact that we're that close is a good sign.
And what, in the projection, is it at 19% now? Is it, what is their projection growth?
Uh, 19, over 19%.
Yeah.
Okay, well, 100 new students in a district of 2,300 students is significant.
Oh, yeah.
So, it easily explains why we are at capacity in some of our buildings and very quickly approaching capacity.
Well, I think we're in great shape this year, but next year, we probably won't be in great shape.
So, are we starting the planning process now for, I mean, are we going to, I mean, obviously, we're probably going to need some temporary classrooms?
So, I've had conversations with board members on that, and I think I just need to do a better job of educating the board that just sending students, overflow students to Monroe is not that easy. It can happen and it can provide some more space, but it's not going to get the job done for three more years until we have more space. So, we would need to talk about modular classrooms.
Yeah.
And I think it's important that we talk about that to our community and taxpayers that if, do you want those tax dollars going towards modular classrooms that are temporary and very expensive or tax dollars going to a new building?
And what's the annual cost of a modular classroom and the life of a modular classroom?
We went in towards Shakina, they had a brand-new modular put in, was it four or eight classrooms?
Four.
Four classrooms. It was gorgeous, I think it was around $400,000 or $500,000 to buy, but there's, there's other hundreds of thousands of dollars for utilities, water, electric, hookup setup, and cement pad and sidewalks. And so, $400,000 for four classrooms seems manageable, but it's still temporary. And then, everything else that comes with it to get it here and get it set up.
Would it double the cost?
Probably.
And the shelf life is?
Um, we didn't, I didn't learn what the shelf life is, but I was pleasantly impressed with the quality. I mean, when you're inside, you really can't tell that you're not in a regular classroom. It's new and it smells new and it seems safe, but we might have families that say, I don't want my child in the modular classroom.
How did they integrate it with their building, their existing building?
Um, it is detached in the back with sidewalks.
So, the students are leaving the building and going to the modular?
But there's multiple modulators in the back.
The only houses, they're elementary, so that's their new elementary, so they have two modulators, one that's much older and one that's newer. The newer one is going to be for their, like, their primary grades. And I talked to them today, I actually met with Shakina today, and they're, from the safety standpoint, it has like buzzer to get in, you know, the corridor that you would expect in a school. It's got its own fire system so that if there's a fire, you know, if there's a fire in, it has its own system that it operates off of, so they do their own fire drills and things like that. But like Dr. Miller said, you know, there's the sidewalks, but they're only using the main school for PE class and lunch.
So, that's my question, is those students are in that modular all day?
Correct.
That would not be the case if we were to use that at Plain City Elementary. We would not have students that are in a modular all day, would we? Wouldn't they be?
Probably for the most part, but they would have, like, shared playground and they might go in for the gym.
I'm talking about, like, in winter time, would they have to leave the main building to go out into their, their modular classroom?
We did it at the old Plain City years ago.
The kids go out when it's 25 degrees for recess anyway, so the exchange is doable, but they're, we prefer not to have to do that.
What was your, what was your experience with it?
It was in the back of the old building, right off of the preschool building, to the old, old bus garage.
Yeah.
Goes to the right-hand side. I mean, it was fine. You know, the teachers are out there even back then, they felt a little disconnected, you know, with the staff, but I think the kids liked it.
How about board members walk through, it takes 15, 20 minutes to walk through the ones at Shakina, and that really will give you a good understanding of the feeling?
I guess, I guess my thinking is, Jim, even if the bottom of you passes, we're not going to solve this problem in three years. I mean, it's going to take three years to build it, and so, we're going to have to take some steps to do something.
If the board gives Mr. Ingles and I authority to start getting that in place, at least two or four at Plain City Elementary for next school year, I think that would really.
I'd love to see a plan, Jim, of what you think it would be, what the cost would be, just, just to share it with us, what you think. I mean, it doesn't have to be done by October, but I think we need to start looking at something pretty soon.
I think it'd be helpful to have the number before the vote.
Well.
There's an option to lease these?
There is. There is also an option to lease, so even, you know, if the bond is successful in November, you know, as Dr. Miller mentioned, it's three years for us to build and, you know, get that, relieve the congestion we have at Plain City. So, it might be a short-term solution for those three years to lease instead of buying a whole modular unit. So, that's an option, so it'd be a lease cost to it. The, we're looking at the central office option for a modular, I mean, that was much bigger than we're talking about for a classroom. It was about nine grand a month, so I was assuming there'd be some, less of a cost for a smaller classroom unit, but we'll still have to pay for the utility hookups and, you know, getting the site ready. So, there is going to be a cost involved even with just leasing. But it, depending on our needs, that could be a temporary solution if the bond passes of, you know, until we get these new buildings up and we get the preschool and fourth grade out of Plain City, you know, we might have to do it, well, we don't know.
Provides some options, let's say that we have the modulators and then we move into the building, take the fourth grade out of the elementaries, but now we're, we need to be out of the high school instead of having a central office, we could move into the, to the modulars.
That's what I wonder, if there's practicality to have it, to purchase it so long-term you could use it for office space.
Yeah, or classroom, I mean, again, we're not sure how fast our district's going to grow. It might be nice to have this. I mean, you think about, you know, 100 new students this year, over 10 years, that's 1,000 new students. We might need it for something else at some point. I would almost think that looking at the growth of our district could be probably wise to look at purchasing some of them anyway.
Yeah, maybe some.
Yeah, I don't know that we would want to purchase a whole slew of them, but I think there'd be some value in the flexibility that purchasing some would have.
I'll have a plan to the board within the month.
Well, Jim, here's, here's the thing, Jim. We, I love it, I love it, but we want a good plan, and so, take your time, make sure it's good.
Yeah, it'll be a draft plan, this first.
Okay.
Just a ballpark, just a ballpark.
Yeah.
Yeah. Right.
So, do you think possibly next year at Plain City, fourth grade will have to do about to do one of these modulators?
Um, I don't, I don't think we've discussed that yet.
I have a granddaughter that's, I think's going to be in fourth grade next year, and I've talked to my daughter who's against a bond, I said, well, you know, you may have to go to a modular and then this might wake her up a little bit.
Yes, it's a possibility.
It's a possibility, Frank.
Go for the bond so your daughter won't have to go, and then put her in anyway, that'd make her really mad.
We don't want to make her mad, but.
Oh, yes, I do.
It's reality. Well, we don't, maybe you do, but we don't.
Yeah, well, it sounds like it's a real possibility and somebody's going to be, and temporarily.
She's also a Monroe child that is going to Plain City. She's one of them that you let go to Plain City because at that time, all of her friends were in Plain City, but now that she's in sports a lot more, she has a lot of friends in Monroe, so it probably wouldn't bother her, she went back to Monroe. She is one of transfers, should be in Monroe instead of Plain City.
Gotcha.
Okay.
We have a handle on all the inter-district open enrollment.
Okay.
Gotcha. I actually, oh, where'd Becky go?
She's.
She had to sneak out, she had to babysit her baby during the joy.
Gotcha. I was just wondering if there are some talking points that, and maybe there is no way to convince private school parents in the district that it benefits them to vote yes for this, but are there resources and reasons for Shakina and Plainview students and parents to benefit from Jonathan Alder? Like, are there services, are there other things that, that they stand to gain by supporting this?
What kind of work are you doing? I mean, you're meeting with Shakina.
So, right now, the work we're doing with Shakina is based on our federal grant dollars because they are taking a share of those dollars. It's the first time Shakina has ever participated in taking federal grant dollars. Now, that would not have impact as far as like our facilities, but we are actually partnering pretty closely with them on some teaching and learning initiatives. We formed a really strong partnership with them this year and got to know them really well. I think, like Nicole said, some athletic reasons maybe that we would, that it would be beneficial to, to our non-publics, their community and, you know, house values and things like that. And we are, we do have a really strong positive relationship right now, especially with Shakina, but all of our non-publics.
Right. I know that some.
Just ask, this is.
Shakina's changed a lot since they moved a lot of the old people out. I mean, they even did away with the festival, the young ones that would just donate more money instead of, you know, putting the tents up, you know, and putting that little thing on. So, now it sounds like they're even changing more.
I mean, Shakina's in our district and the majority of kids from Shakina live in our district, is that a fair statement?
Majority, yeah.
Majority, but it's becoming less.
But if our levy passed, would it be hard to make that a bus stop where we pick up those kids?
We have buses, we have bus drivers.
If we have bus drivers, yeah. I just wonder if it's an added benefit, if there's something we could provide an added benefit.
All of Plainview students live in the district, but for Shakina, I mean, for the most part, I would say that probably most of Plainview students live in the district. For Shakina, it's getting to be less and less, but there is still a majority, I would think.
I just wonder if we could, would be an incentive of something like that, since we're driving throughout the district anyway.
Right.
Would it be something that we could do to?
I guess.
And that's another, I don't know. We don't have bus drivers now, so it wouldn't be possible.
Right. Well, and I know that I had a Plainview board member call me to talk to Becky about special services for some special needs, and I also had him ask about athletic stuff, and I knew that there's some stuff that you guys were doing with.
From the student services side, we, any, any of our non-publics that are within our boundaries, we would be the ones that would evaluate students if there's a suspected disability. We would be the ones evaluating and helping write those individualized plans for students. We would do that for any, no matter what, that's a, that's a law that we, that we have to partner with them.
Even homeschool children, students?
If there was a student who is homeschooled that suspects there's a suspected disability, Becky's department would take care of, like, all the evaluation process for that.
Okay. Okay. That's helpful.
On your, on your school bus drivers, how many are reach retirement age other than maybe Linda?
Some are over retirement.
Yeah, quite a few, yeah, those are a couple are over retirement age and.
I know Linda, she just keeps coming back every year.
Where's your CDLs?
I was literally wondering.
Am I?
Yeah.
I never had one, honey.
You didn't need one because you're a farmer.
I drove illegally for a while.
No, you didn't need it to hear.
Off the record, you're hiding.
Just once in a while.
You, you've got time, man. Take that test, we need you.
I'm blind in one eye.
How convenient for you.
Seriously, I took 30 shots in this eye. Although in state of eye, you're legally allowed to drive a car blind in one eye, but I don't know. I pass my bus drivers on.
Mr. Lester, can you find that out?
Although I did know a guy that did that, and when he would take his eye test, now he said, well, you know, cover your, your left eye, and he'd go like that, and he said, I'll cover your right eye, and he'd go like this, and he'd alarm and he'd pass it every year. But that was inconspicuous.
We're sharper out here.
Yeah, I know.
Okay. Well, that's it for tonight. Can I have a motion to adjourn?
Next regular board meeting?
Yeah, what? Oh, the next regular board meeting is September 9th.
Nope.
Nope, October 14th at 5:00 p.m. at the Plain City Elementary School.
It is going to be at Plain City?
Yeah.
Yeah.[1794.73] Yeah.
Want a motion to adjourn?
Yes, I'd like to.
I can move, that we adjourn.
Second, Dave.
Okay, roll call.
Mrs. Stettweiler.
Yes.
Mr. Hooly.
Yes.
Mr. Votah.